First item is roll call.
Council members, Kuhn?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Teal?
Here.
Mayor Brar?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Rashard?
Here.
And Chair West?
Present. Okay, first item-
It's 6:05 up there.
Wow.
Is the computer off on time? Yeah, I've got 6:04 here, too. That says 6:05.
Well, before you- before we get to the business, can I ask that the rezoning for the Edison be put on the next council agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the first and only item is discussion of items, no, excuse me, consideration of process for determining developer selection for Clark and Parmenter Streets Development. Eileen, are you explaining this?
Sure. Bill Burns put this matrix together and with, you know, staff input, and we're providing it as a starting point for your discussions. Obviously, you can choose the criteria that you'd like to. This is the criteria we thought was probably most appropriate. It's tied directly to the request for proposals. And there's three different focuses, so you can kind of see, you know, what or choose what you think is most important. First of all, there's four different areas under the proposal criteria. Land use and project design is one major category. Some of the things that would be considered under that and rated are land use compatible with city comprehensive plans and surrounding neighborhood, use of high-quality materials, architecture and attractive design features, and then development timelines and inclusion of a detailed and realistic schedule. Each one of those can be weighted based on your focus, and that would be something that obviously the committee of the whole of the council would have to choose. The first one is a financial focus. So, these things are rated, some of these things are rated a little less than something in the next category might be. But the second option is the land use focus. So, the, is the land use compatible with the comprehensive plan and with the surrounding neighborhood? That gets a higher weighting under the land use focus than the financial focus or the balanced focus. And then, so again, so those show that under option one, the financial focus, those first set of criteria would have a total of 25 points. Under the land use focus, they might have a total of 45 points because that might be considered more important if you're looking more at the land use. And under the balanced option, it's right in the middle, then, 30 points. The financial factors for the purchase price of the land, obviously under the financial focus then, it's weighted that 25 points would be geared toward the purchase price of the land, and projected value is about the same for all the focuses. The land use focus is less for the level of TIF assistance required. So, but you can see then in that criteria, the financial factors, how heavily weighted it might be in the financial focus. It's 45 points out of 100. It's 25 points out of 100 for the land use focus, and it's 30 again with the balanced focus. Other policy considerations, inclusion of workforce housing units or inclusion of sustainability features. Those were given pretty much the same for each of those because they would fit within each. Development team and overall impression, again, pretty well-balanced. But primarily in the land use and project design and the financial factors, there's heavier weights depending on if you're looking at the land use issues or the financial. And then the balanced one is pretty much even throughout. Does that give you an idea of what we- and again, as a starting point for your discussions, because it, we know you didn't want to look at this until tonight, but we wanted to have something for you to at least start with and focus on for discussion.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Kathy?
The project total valuation of, projected total valuation, there are 10 all the way across, and that, to me, would seem like that should be higher under the financial portion.
It could definitely be that, and that's something that you can play with and, you know, move around the point totals.
And then would density be under the land use compatibility with the city plan? Would that where density would?
Um, yes, land use and project design.
That would take that's where, where density, okay.
Are there other questions? I've got one. Eileen, on level of TIF assistance requested, you've got either 5 points or 10 points. Is that basically the inverse of the amount of TIF so that's being requested? So, you'd get 10 points if you request less TIF?
That's a good question.
I mean, because that's quite confusing for the land use focus.
Yeah.
If they're not requesting very much TIF, why are they-
Why would they get-
-getting 5 points? Whereas if you request a whole lot of TIF-
Yeah.
You're getting 10 points, and it seems like that should be flipped.
That's a good point. I think it's, again, it's a subjective. How much do you want to attach to that? And I think, you know, if, if the idea that you, that you have that more TIF is a, is a negative, then maybe you want to assign 5 points to it. And if the idea of having less is, is better, then maybe it's 10. So-
I think that's, needs to be clarified.
And, and we can, you can clarify each one of these and talk through each one if you'd, if you'd like. Because this is just our attempt to put something on paper to say, you know, here's the one way to look at it. One of the, and we thought, you know, with like the financial one shows it more heavily weighted, 45% toward, you know, financial considerations. And then, you know, less for the other focuses. But it's really, it's up to you.
I think we need clear, unfortunately, Bill's not here, so we don't have clarification on that one.
I would take it a different way. I would say that there's 10 points total for the, for the finance piece. If you are maxing out your TIF, then you might score 2. If you're score, if you're not maxing out TIF, you might score an 8 or a 10.
That's a good way to look at it, too. You can, I mean, again, it doesn't have to be these totals.
And, okay, on the land use, if they're not taking any TIF-
Then they score 5.
Why shouldn't that be equal to scoring a 10?
Because it's not weighted that way. The whole thing is not weighted that way. There's a, you can't look at it compared to finance piece. You have to look at it in and of itself under the option 2.
I guess I'm having trouble with the idea of someone taking zero TIF dollars and not getting very many points versus someone who takes-
Then adjust the-
-5 or 10 times more TIF.
But all you'd have to do is adjust what's in option 2, not compare to option 1. Right? You have to look at these things exclusively. If the financial focus is what you're picking, you have 100 points to move around in option 1. You don't compare it to option 2 and 3.
Okay.
Susan, if I could address that. I think Bill's intent was, and we talked about it a bit, is that level of TIF assistance, you're rewarding somebody who's requesting less.
Right.
The policy that we are trying to work more toward is a 50/50 balance at most on developer finance projects for TIF assistance relative to what goes back into the TIF.
Okay, if it's clear that it's what's being requested less, then someone that requests none would get a 0.
Right. Not that you would get more for asking for more.
Right, right.
That's what I want to make it really clear.
I hope I didn't say that. That wasn't the intent.
That's what I was concerned with.
And by the way, I should mention that we did get both developers' proposals on time before 4:30 today, both electronically, and we got a hard copy. And we have not looked at any of them. They are in my office. So, they're not opened. So, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are simply discussing tonight this matrix, correct?
We, we thought this would be a good template from which you could start the discussion. And you could, as Eileen said, you could adjust it as you see fit. But we wanted to give you something to react to rather than just to have the discussion from, from scratch.
And we could also add or delete if we think that's-
Right. Okay.
And then, if you would like to direct staff to do a, an analysis of both development options and bring that back next Tuesday, we're, we're planning to do that. And then if, you know, after you've chosen the weighted option, then you get a staff recommendation based on the option that's chosen, you can of course accept or reject that recommendation.
Can we actually vote on an option tonight, since it's a committee of the whole?
Yes, absolutely. You're, you know, you're having this meeting to discuss and then make a, an advisory recommendation to your other selves next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, I'll weigh in. Um, just before I talk about any of the options presented before me, I guess I want to confirm similar to what you were saying. What I imagine is that for each one of these categories, so going right down from the top, land use compatible with city comprehensive plans and surrounding neighborhood, what I would say is, I would think the city staff would basically give it a score of 0 to 100, 0 to 100%. And then multiply that 0 to 100% by whatever number we've targeted here as the weighting factor. So, it'd be 10 if we chose option 1, 20 if we chose option 2. So, even if you give them 100%, the most they can get is 20 if we're, if we pick option 2, and the most they can get is 10 if we pick option 1. Is that, is my understanding the same as all my fellow council members? That's how it'll work. It's not going to be, just because one of the things I felt I heard was that it might be like, oh, somebody will either get a 10 or they'll get a 0. And I don't want that to be the case. I think it needs to float with-
Right, the weighted-
Because both options, both options may get a 10 on, on something, and both options may get a 3 on something else.
I hope I, I hope I didn't say that.
I don't think you did. I just, I want it to be extremely clear to me.
Yes.
And if it's extremely clear to me, hopefully it's extremely clear to the people smarter than me in the room, which is probably all of us.
Well, also, in terms of just adding up, having everything, each one of these categories rated on a score of 0 to 100, then with this as the multiplier, will give a more fine-tuned total score.
Correct. And so, that's, sounds like we are all on the same page, so I have nothing more to say on that topic.
Other comments, concerns, suggestions?
About the total valuation of the project, I'd like to see that weighted a little higher under the financial focus. I don't know where you'd take, what would be appropriate or where to take the other points from. We could take 5 off of maybe development team knowledge, financial capacity and experience with similar projects.
Do we have to, I know, make a suggestion here. Do we have to have things in increments of 5 that you could do?
No.
Oh, you could put 100% on total valuation of the project.
Or you could put 12 and 1/2.
While you're meeting in committee.
I actually agree with Kathy, so I think-
Yeah, I, in my, I guess I would take it off the development team knowledge, take 5 off of there, and at least 5 more onto the total valuation, if not more. So. This one, development team knowledge, financial capacity, under development.
5 off of that?
Well, it's up to everybody else, but that would be my suggestion.
The only thing I'd be concerned about is the financial capacity part. If someone is maxed in all their projects, then it is something to consider. I think that, that is a well-thought-out topic, but I hear what you're saying.
What if we take off 5 from the purchase price of the land and put it on the project valuation?
I think I, purchase price of the land was the major factor.
Okay.
Well, that's-
I think that's, well, I mean, that is something to consider, maybe-
That's a consideration. I think we had different opinions. Joanna?
So, let's kick, well-
So, I like the other policy considerations, but they kind of stick out there, kind of on their own. I wonder if we can add the sustainability features to the land use and project design for the second category, use of high-quality materials. And then, for that one, then choose the land use function or the land use focus. I like a lot of the financial ones, but I, there's a couple of the land use ones that I really want to mix in. And so, I, the balanced one doesn't do it for me, though, because then it's just a, it's an average. It's not necessarily, so I would take out sustainability feature as its own category and add it to the second one under land use. And then workforce housing, I would add under to the development team and overall impression. And then beef that score up a bit.
What was that last one, sorry?
The workforce housing units.
Put that under development team and overall impression?
Right. So, then you really only have three categories. You have the land use, financial, and then development team and overall impression. And then, then maybe you can even think about a 45, financial, and then 30 and 30 for the other ones. Or a 40, 30, 30, just to be, to even it out.
Joanna, I like those. I've got a question on, and it's something that's bothered me for a long time, on TIF projects, is Bill's the only one, or maybe city staff, are the only ones that see the actual pro forma and financial qualifications of the different developers? And, so he will be rating that aspect.
I haven't seen the developer proposals, so it's hard to say what is in them at this time.
But just in terms of that.
Typically, that's what we do, though, because it's, developers don't want that to be public information, most typically. If it's confidential, pro forma type of, there's some that clearly would be more public in orientation and other that would be of a confidential nature. So, that, that is of a confidential nature, we'd have Bill Burns review and give his judgment on.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is something that's concerned me since I first got on council was for the Mustard Museum and I think it was Tribeca at the same time, I wanted information. I asked each developer for information. One of them simply told me, we don't even give that information to our banks. Turns out, they went bankrupt. So, I want to be sure that we're looking at that in great detail. The other thing that's not on here that I've got a concern about is timeline for finishing it and for starting the project.
Oh, yeah, that's on there. Development timelines and inclusion of a detailed and realistic schedule.
Okay. And to be certain that, you know, this land is developed by these developers and not sold to someone else.
I'm, Susan, I'm not sure that we could do that.
Yeah.
Okay. We can't put a timeline on it?
No, not the timeline part, but the preventing them from selling to, to someone else.
And I think what she's- Go ahead. I think what she's getting at is she doesn't want us to let somebody flip this property.
Yeah.
That when we do this, we expect that the developer we choose is going to build and not, not try and flip it to another party.
We could-
Whether, whether that becomes an assignment later on is, is not really something we can preclude, but at least the initial development is with the developer that we choose.
And that could be included in the development agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
But, for the long term-
Right.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about developing this project. Once it's developed, that's fine.
Right.
What I'm talking about is someone getting the land, holding it for a year, and then selling it to someone else to develop, and we don't have as much control. Mark, do you have something?
I had a question about the definition of what the purchase price of the land is.
Well, I, I think that that pertains to the stated purchase price, the 2.6, so-
Financing involved in that. If I pay you 2.6 upfront, that's a cash value. But if I'm going to pay you that 2.6 over time, that's a different value.
Right.
So, I'm trying to understand what the metric is here.
Well, that would be, again, if you value the 2.6 upfront, then you might weight it the, the most points. If you're not supportive of over time, then you might take away those points and rate it less. I think that's a decision-
Understanding of the purchase price is the, the highest net present value or the highest current cash value?
Yeah, I think we need that defined.
Well, and I think you guys are the ones that would define it. It would be, I mean, these are, these are categories to say, these are the things for you to think about and look at. You have to decide in, in your mind, you know, collectively, what you're thinking about that, what you're, how you would rate that and how you would evaluate that.
But we're not doing the initial screening. Someone on planning staff or someone in finance is going to do this rating. So, I'm trying to understand, how are they going to rate that?
Well, I think that, that's part of what you'll tell us tonight, what you think is important and what you think that means, and how, how many points you might give to those various things. I mean, that's my answer. I don't know if Abby and Mike have anything to add to that, but I, we're basically evaluating it with these categories, but with your, with your weights. So-
Jacob, you had a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that may be missing here is, and I think-
Do we let the developers talk about it? They should weigh in.
Okay. Hold on.
This is our discussion. Okay, I was going to respond to what you were saying.
So, I would say, you know, if I was thinking it, if somebody was paying 2.63 million upfront, that's 25 for me. So, I'd be interested in more net.
Mm-hmm.
But then how do you rank someone that's willing to pay the 2.6 over 10 years or 20?
It's an increment of 10, you know, divided by 10.
And if we bring-
But that way, I mean, if we go on the 100%, then it's-
And, and it's just like the matrix and the values. If we bring an, an assessment to you, you know, of those and what we think, then that's where I see another discussion with you all saying, oh, wait a minute, we don't agree with this because we think it should be, you know, X value based on the fact that this is upfront. I mean, you'll be able to look at the point totals assigned and the values assigned. Do you disagree with that, I mean, that's? Do you agree? Okay, go.
Yeah, I think we, we do need to define, you know, let's say, purchase price by what will be the perfect number B. If you want 25, this is what you get, and what the 0, there'll be some sort of qualification.
Yeah, could we-
The same way with the projected total valuation and other, need some little bit more.
We need definitions of each one of these subcategories as to how points will be assigned.
I think the definition was in the RFP. You know, the purchase price for the land, 2.63 million. So, on the face value, if you are offering 2.63 million, you get 25 points. The other considerations-
But Mike, but let me point out, 2.63 million paid upfront in a single check is one thing that I could see for 25 points. 2.6 million financed over 10 years is a very different-
Yes.
Situation. And that's what I would like clarification on, as to how that's going to be.
But isn't that the same set of questions for the level of TIF assistance requested and when it's requested? Because it could be upfront or it could be developer finance over time.
Right, right.
And are we, are those going to be weighted differently?
Yeah, that's the kind of things that I would feel more comfortable having answered.
We originally had about 25 or 30 categories on this matrix, but it just didn't make sense to be so detailed.
Right.
So, we wanted to have broad categories so that you could choose.
I'd like to say something about this. You know, as much as you want to try to take subjectivity out of this, there are value judgments in each of these, what appear to be objective categories, but they're not. You know, there are subjective values you bring to an objective rating. You can't help that.
Right.
The more prescriptive you are, I don't know that it makes it any more objective.
How many people are actually going to be doing the rating? Is this going to be one person?
Our TIF team would be Bill, Eileen, Abby, and me.
And we would do it independently and then bring them together and see what we each put.
And there's going to be no one outside like our TIF consultants doing it?
We hadn't anticipated that.
I think it should be the city staff.
It was just going to be the city staff, the four of us.
Emily?
That sounds healthy.
City staff only.
Yeah, especially if you have four people doing it independently, and if they line up, that's a pretty good use of your time. Like you said, if they're subjective, even if you intend well, if they're coming into alignment, you, you have a pretty solid thing. And what I would suggest for them to consider is possibly have, say, two or three of them do it, and that way they can rotate as developments happen. Like, maybe in a thin year, you only have one or two developments. But in a heavier, you know, you might have six or seven, and down the road, we may have new people coming on board, and it might be heavy. So, if you have a sort of a rotating, if somebody's on leave, like when I was on maternity leave, it wouldn't have been available back in the day. So, I, I think it's healthy. I think it's reasonable, and it sounds like you're thinking through it. So, thank you.
But one question's how prescriptive everybody wants to be, because Susan's saying she'd like it to be more prescriptive.
I guess what I'm saying is I would like to understand some of these things in a little more detail so that I can choose between the three different options.
And what we're saying is we'd like to hear how you'd like that considered. You know, that would help us in doing the ratings as well, hearing from you. Now, we've heard quite a bit from all, I believe, almost all of you on this over time. So, if you speak up now, if you have different opinions from others on the council, but, you know, we've had three or four meetings on this already, talking about the values of these. And of course, we're informed in our staff judgments from hearing how you value each of these criteria. So, that helps us in doing our analysis as well.
Right. So, one of the things we need to also, we've got a comment on these categories on the left, but we need to choose between options 1, 2, and 3. And I think that's an important decision. Okay, Robert?
So, as I look at this, there are, this has been whittled down to 10 major topics, broken up into four, and now we've changed it to three categories of those topics. Can we just walk through each one of these 10? It shouldn't take too long, but look at the very first one, kind of go through and say, what does this mean? And what are the two or three factors for rating that? Then we have our prescription for what we're going to ask staff to kind of rate each one of these on, on 0 to 100%. Then, once we know our prescription, we move on to say, okay, now that we all kind of have an understanding of how these will be rated, now let's figure out which of these three are what, what combination, what, what fourth, what fourth weighting system, if we don't choose one of the three given. And I think we'll primarily be where we need to be then by the end of the evening.
Bear, bear in mind that once the proposals are in front of us, each one of us is going to take this, this little chart, and we're going to weigh it ourselves. Now, this would be really helpful if we had five or six proposals, but we only have two proposals. You know, so really, in all honesty, you, you could make this little chart, and you can decide what's important to each and every one of us, and that's how the vote's going to come out. It's not going to matter really what style you do or what numbers you want to put on, on what things. In the end, every single one of the, of us is going to score it.
Robert?
I, to respond to that, I, I don't disagree with you, Dan, but I think what this does is it kind of holds our own feet to the fire to say, look, this is what we agreed to before we knew who was going to, which, which proposal was going to have what features. And we can go in tonight knowing some of those features, probably just from what we've seen in the past, but it holds our feet to the fire. And if, if all of a sudden we said, yeah, that was, that was worth the full 10 points or 25 points or whatever it was, and all of a sudden we say, well, city staff rated that as a 23 out of 20- and all of a sudden we say, well, city staff rated that as a 23 out of 25, but I'm counting it as zero because I don't like the way the cookie crumbles at the end of the day, you know, that's dishonest, and I don't think any of us are planning to be dishonest, but I think that this will basically pull us up short and say, okay, well, these are the, these are the weightings that I agreed to back on the 29th, and come the second, or whenever the next meeting is, I think we'll have to kinda live with what we get. Maybe I'm wrong.
I don't agree with, we're gonna have to live with what we get, so what you're saying is that if you, if the consensus of the group is that they want whatever, pick whatever one you want, and, but I disagree with that, then when it comes time for me to make a vote on whichever project is, because we, because five out of, out of, said that this is more important, and I gotta go with that? That's not how that's gonna work.
Mark, you had a comment?
I'll just take a step back, and you mentioned what everyone agreed to. My recollection is that everyone agreed, when we discussed this, that the first gate was to pay the principal, the principal amount back first, before you even got into any other discussions, right? So, that to me was the first gate. That's the threshold that, that anybody that wants to move on needs to say, here's a check for 2.6, and if you can't do that, then we don't move on. But that seems to have gone by the wayside, so I, I think we really knew need to say, it's important or it's not important, right? So, our financial repercussions because of this, this, because we have delayed this, it is costing the city money, right? It is threatening other projects in TIF 5, because we cannot free TIF 5 from that obligation. So, again, I think we need to say first and foremost, this, whatever project, whatever developer wants to proceed, has to give us a check upfront. And then we can figure out with a developer agreement, what gets developed, and how fast, and how much TIF assistance gets put in the mix, and all these other things. But there has to be that first passing of the gate, and I don't see that yet, the importance of it from colleagues here. That should be the, the initial key, is get us past that gate, and then we can make this TIF development be whatever we need it to be.
Dylan?
So getting back to the matrix, which is the focus of the meeting, I wonder if there could be, if we, now if we have three categories-
Abby, could you scroll it up higher, because the full bottom part is not present on the TV screens here? That might help too, so that we can-
So if we looked at the land use and project design and made that 40 points, and added sustainability to that feature, you could have four categories, 10 points each, and the financial, you could have 40, and maybe even break out some of these, or make the purchase price a 20, and then the other ones 10. And then the, what I would call miscellaneous, or the development team and overall impression category, 20. So you'd have 40, 40, 20. To me, that's more of a balanced-balanced.
And you'd put the inclusion of workforce housing units, you'd put that under development team and overall impression, and add those five points or 10 points to that.
Yeah.
And you'd put sustainability under land use and project design-
Right.
And add the points to that total.
So, I already made that change, Joanna, and I added the fives. But now it sounds like you like the idea of having 40 for the land use and project design, 40 for financial.
Right, yeah, I, I was trying to get him into three categories, and then I don't know if, I, I think you don't want 30, 30. So I was trying to do a way that, the, I, I think what you're hearing, and I, I disagree with Mark, you can't just give us a check and then it's a blank slate. I think there is a balance with what it looks like, what this is, what this development's gonna feature for the city, and I'm trying to balance those two, and then you have your, kind of the third way of, you know, kind of additional approaches that might be important but not as important. So that's your, like, wild card, but I think those two have to be balanced, the financial and the-
Joanna, are you talking about which option, or for the whole, another option that, because financial-
It's kind of, it is kind of a fourth option.
Kind of a fourth option.
If you're doing a financial focus, and your financial factors are the same across the board, that doesn't make any sense.
No, well, and I would make this four category, or you could do the purchase price, could be 20 points instead of 25. I'm just trying to put something in that, in that financial factors category.
What about making the financial-
Just writing it, just because someone can write a check doesn't mean that it's the right development to me.
That, I agree very strongly with you. What if financial factors, the subtotal for that was a little bit higher?
Well, that's why I was saying 40, 'cause it's higher than the balanced one, so, but lower than the-
I guess where I'm having, yeah, where I'm getting confused is the fact that we've got different numbers for each of these options in there, instead of financial factors being 45 across the board for all three of them.
And if, could I just say something really quick?
Yeah, it's-
'Cause the idea behind that was to say-
Add it to 100.
Does the council wanna have a financial focus, which I'm hearing some people say yes, or is there more of a land use and, and other quality issues equally are more important or whatever? And I think that's why we tried to have the different focuses, because you get to choose, as a group, what you think is the most important.
Well, I think in any of these options, financial should perhaps be, have the most points. If that's what we all agreed on would be a number one consideration. But I have, I share your concern, someone can give us the check, and then we're not sure what we'll get. Emily?
Oh, because you, you still have to go through the development process. It'd be no different than somebody saying, I have this piece of land I'd like to develop, right? And this is what I'd like to put on there. It's still subject to all the approval processes of the city, right? Has zoning issues, has planning issues, all have, all those gates have met. It's not like somebody can buy or acquire a piece of property and build whatever they want.
And we should have a bidding warrant. That's not what an RFP is. That's a bid.
That's a bid, and the other thing is meeting the zoning standards is not necessarily, we don't require workforce housing to meet a zoning regulation.
But if you want TIF, you're gonna get, you're gonna put workforce housing in there, right? That's a negotiation through the developer process.
But it's not part of the zoning regulation.
I didn't say it was. All I'm saying is that just because somebody owns a piece of property, doesn't mean that they can build whatever they want. It still has certain city gates that has to go through to get something built.
Well, of course he's right, I mean, it has to go through the plans.
No, no, may I finish? There's an issue of, okay, we grant this project, or choose between one of these two developers, and then we get to tell them how they're going to develop it? That's what it sounds like to me, that you're saying. And I don't think that's what we want. Emily?
I am very sad to see that workforce housing is noted at 3% of your points now. Not under the newest suggestion, but the way it's been chopped in. And it's not to question city staff's thought process, but the reason I'm saying this is that financial factors is with 40%, but what are we saying to developers from here out if we weigh workforce housing at 3%? How many meetings have I heard you guys talk about workforce housing?
Same with sustainability, that's an important factor also.
Thank you. I was worried about that too. I haven't found it.
And they all can't, can't be high, you know, it's-
But you could weigh more appropriately.
I would like to see sustainability higher, but, I mean, not everything can have a high score.
But 40% for finances, and, and Mark, honestly, you're the one that can say that's, that's your baby. That's, you can win that one, but 3%.
You guys have to remember, this is a TIF project. The purpose of TIF is to develop increment, okay? And if you're not developing increment, we shouldn't have the TIF. That's really what the first threshold should be in your head. I'm setting aside tax dollars here to build increment, and if you're not building increment, then we shouldn't have TIF.
I would like to get Eileen to clarify that, because I think there's quite a few projects that have been done with TIF into 3, such as the Confluence Pond, that did not generate any direct increment.
Infrastructure projects, sure. Yeah, that's true.
But they were fed, they were paid for with TIF.
Right, which is why Mark is saying you have to-
Right.
Produce increment.
Right, well-
Yes, we need to produce increment, but does it have to be every single?
Sure. Well, typically-
Is that's the only thing we decide on? I think, no, there's value to workforce housing and sustainability and some of these other things, and how it, the city.
And typically, what we're looking at as a city is, you know, the first test of it, is it but for, is there a gap? Or, in a lot of cases, we've used TIF very successfully in terms of getting a project that otherwise wouldn't have occurred either in that timeframe, or with those amenities, or with those special features that the city has deemed important, such as workforce housing. We, in almost every single case, have evaluated it to make sure that it does pay back. There's a couple cases where it's almost like a lost leader, where it's not likely to pay back within the TIF, but it's a very important project for the TIF, either because it's gonna generate more in spin-off increment, or it helps the downtown in some cases, so, and then certainly the public improvement projects, which we've been very fortunate to have tens of millions of dollars' worth of TIF used to pay for very important, you know, public improvement projects that otherwise would have fallen to the capital budget. So I don't know if that answers the question that you're asking, but it's always, just like you're doing here, it's always a somewhat subjective, as Mike said, it's an evaluation. And we do like to look at the bottom line, but we also like to, as a city, I think, and, you know, staff and you all, look at what are we able to produce that's going to be, it's gonna stand the test of time in terms of development, and it's gonna pay back the TIF, and it's gonna generate hopefully more and better and higher land uses through the years. And I think if you go back even to our number, our first TIF, which I wasn't here for, or the second TIF, which I also wasn't here for, and all the way through 3 and 5 now, and look at any project, that's what has been done. An evaluation, and a, almost, you know, not with a matrix, but an evaluation nonetheless, so. Again, I hope that answers the question.
Emily?
The only thing I was gonna say before, and thank you for that explanation, was that when I agreed to the money coming back, as Mark talked about, when I agreed, now granted, I think that was month one as an alder, my understanding was not day one check, but it would be paid back quickly. Being an economist, sometimes quickly is 10 years or 20 years, you know, so it, it goes to what you're saying, which is what is the length of the TIF, and that might have been my fault, I misinterpreted with what you were saying, is it would be paid back quickly. But there may be some understanding somewhere along those lines, maybe it's not day one, maybe it's year two or year five, and that may be where we all are at. But I do agree with you, it's important to have finances, but I also agree that there needs to be balance.
There's a, there's both the, the quick financial benefit, which is what Mark's talking about, or turnaround. Then there's also the long-term value increment, for example, Middleton Center. The city is not getting any increment out of that through the end of TID 3, but we're getting great value from that project for the long-term building value past the terminus of the TIF district. So, you know, 50, 55 million dollars in new, in increased value over that time, but no increment going back into the TIF district for the time being, it's going for the development project. That's a, a good case in point of a qualitative value for the downtown and for the community as a whole. Amherst Road, where we cleared Blight.
Yes.
We're not going to make increment on that project. The Veterans Health Administration brought 400 jobs into the community, and we're not going to make increment on that project either. So we've done some qualitative things that bring value to the community in other ways. In the case of the Veterans Health Administration, good-paying jobs and a 20-year federal lease. So, I, I just think the, the issue of financial is, is broader than that quick turnaround on the cash. It's also about building value and getting increment back to the district if we can. And a lot of our infrastructure projects are an impetus for greater development. Confluence Pond being a great example of that, and the road projects. So those are not of no value, those are of actually seeding the value for development projects. So I think we, we try to, as staff, look at the full spectrum of what TIF is about. It's not just the bottom-line finances, although that's an important part, particularly in the long haul, to build increment that by the end of the TIF district, or even when we do an amendment and we bring back value to the underlying taxing jurisdictions, that it has that kind of benefit. So it's all about that in the long run, but it's also about some of the qualitative values as well.
But Mike, you know, for example, this Milton Downtown Center, in that case, the, the land was owned by the developer, or he self-financed it, so in this case, if the land was owned by the developer, we will be talking about a lot different things than what we're talking about, so, so that's sort of a different situation here. So just cutting back to some of the things that you were talking about, even though if you're grading a paper, you still know when you give somebody 100, what does it mean. I know each city council person, like Dan said, is going to, you know, more or less know what 100 is for them, but there are four staff members evaluating it, at least for you, four, you know, you may have different understanding too. So maybe at least define what is, you know, 100 for you.
Right, I, I agree, and that's why-
That would be a good thing to start with, so.
That's why Bill tried to create options here, which allowed you to give your policy preference to. You know, the, the financial focus, clearly, we heard a lot of discussion about that. You could have a higher value of financial focus if you want, let us know that. Same thing on land use focus, same thing on the balanced focus. And, you know, what Joanna was starting to do is say, this is my policy preference, so that's good for us to know. We know where Joanna stands. We're not quite sure on everybody else yet, well, excuse me, on Mark, we're pretty sure. But, you know, that helps us to understand your values when it comes to how we should review this.
Okay, we need to come to-
Mr. Howard here, so.
Howard, did you-
I, I was just gonna comment that, you know, I look at this as a process of, a two-part process. The first part being that, give this to city staff, and there's four people that are going to read these things, as to their opinions. Does this meet this? Does it not meet this objective? They're done doing that, they're gonna come back to us, and they're gonna say, in our opinion, in our opinion, this is how we view these proposals. Which one we rate higher than the other one, here's why. You still have the opportunity, or we collectively still have the opportunity, to look at each one of these things, and I'm looking at, I'm gonna pick on my favorite target over there, Mark. Who may agree or disagree with Mark's assumption that a check in 2.63 million. But if you don't think that's the case, then you leave that number appropriately in your ranking of what you believe. If you don't believe that, you can put your number, or you can note your feeling on what that means, and if you don't rate that very high, that just simply means you don't rate the fact that there's a check in 2.63 million. But, contractually, we're gonna get our money, it's just depends upon how you want to look at when you get that. So when I look at this, and, and there's some very interesting things. We could talk about, pick any one of these, we could talk at length about just the subjectiveness of, of each one of those things. I'll pick on one right now. Um, the second one, under land use, use of high-quality materials. Now, you tell me who's gathered in this room, except for a couple people I see over here, is going to be able to subjectively look and say, yeah, they're really good, high-quality materials. Come on, somebody tell me.
I can do that.
Okay, I'm gonna have to rely on the fact that, that the staff who sees this stuff all the time probably has a little more understanding, a little more than I would about what a high-quality material is. Okay? But I can surely decide for myself something about, uh, workforce housing and sustainability. I mean, those are fairly simple, fairly straightforward things to decide.
And I bet almost every single one of you also has an opinion about the quality materials, because we've heard that with different projects, so, you know, and we appreciate that. That's what we wanna hear.
Back to the development over where the baseball...
Yeah, yeah, you guys all weighed in on it. It's good.
Weeks, we sat and looked, and the staff looked at that, and every time I saw it, I'm sitting in here and they come in, and what do they do? They lay down a document that's got an entirely different thought process behind it, different color to this and different size this, and I thought, my God, this'll go on forever. Okay? It's, it's, it's your own personal opinion, and if you don't like how they do it, pick a number.
So would you like us to come up with one of these four options, give you feedback?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be good.
That, that would be very helpful, or a, a new option.
The fourth option.
Oh, Joanna's got the fourth.
Oh, or a fifth option.
A fifth option.
So I have a question. When this staff is ranking, are you going to just sign yourself number A, B, C, or one, two, three, four? Would it be confidential? Or are you going to pull those numbers, and it's going to be only for the city council to look at, or how is it going to be handled?
It'd be a public document. We would, we would make our evaluation as a team and present that to the council.
So you will put a composite number rather than those four different values?
Correct.
Why can't we see it as the four different single options?
Four different single options, you mean from each person?
Yeah, each person's ranking.
And you added four people to the council, to those gathered around here.
Uh, you know, if the council wants us to do that, uh, sure.
I don't. Have to rely on the integrity of the staff every once in a while.
Oh, every once in a while. I hope you rely on it every day. Yeah, you rely on it every day.
Over's out there laughing.
Staff does have more experience in doing this than we do. Do we have any...
How about this? Why don't you? There's eight of us. There's nine of us up here. We have, what, ten? Is it ten on each there? Can't count. Four, four, ten. There are ten criteria here. Everybody put their own number from one to a hundred on there. Add 'em up, weight 'em. Everybody's one-ninth. Unless you guys wanna play with this game, too. Right? We could have twelve members, thirteen members. It comes out that way.
Basically, each one of us scoring.
Add up the scores.
But we need, if we do scoring like that, we need to pick one of these four options.
No, that would be the option. It would be the average of everyone's.
No, I guess he's right. So that would be the other option.
No, I guess...
All you gotta do is rate off, all ten categories, one to a hundred.
Okay, you're rating all ten categories.
That's your weighting.
Or one to ten, that's the same.
Or one to ten.
To add up to a hundred points.
To add up to a hundred points.
Or to be multiplied by a hundred and then factored down, is that...
We've only got eight categories.
Well, we have ten.
On the revise.
So break 'em back to ten.
Oh, I thought those were taken down and, and still a separate line.
Break 'em back to ten. Everybody rates them one to a hundred, or puts a hundred points.
Okay, okay.
I'm with you.
One to ten, like, or whatever.
Yeah, one to ten.
You add 'em all up.
Somebody might say, well, this category is, this is worth fifty percent to me. So there, that's what, you know, yeah.
That's a choice.
I know, that's what...
Then they only have fifty to spread the rest of the...
Sure, yeah.
You have a hundred points to spread or ten points to spread around there.
Like, it looks like. Many of you are showing to do that already, so is that the consensus?
It's done.
It's done.
I would like it a little clearer. You're saying each one of those ten things...
There are ten items, right?
And each one gets a total of ten points.
No, each one gets a, the total column is a hundred points.
A hundred points to spread.
You can put ten on each one, or you can put ninety on one and ten on another. You can put a hundred on one, and zero on everything else.
If you did that, then we should tally that while you're all here, and then let you know what the result was.
Do you have more of these that we can just...
Um, yeah, we have more. We could make a, we could make some more copies, too. I have some extra. Let's see.
Maybe then, um, in the margins, I scribbled on mine.
I don't need it. I don't need it.
I need a writing utensil. Do you have enough? I've written, then I would. I could use a writing utensil.
In summary, you're adding up to a hundred in these ten categories and assigning whatever point value in each of those ten categories that you would like. And you need a...
Here, this one, I'll take it up. This one, I'll, I'll give this one to you, then.
Gonna write a number on the right-hand side that represents what you think it's worth.
I'm gonna sit down. Yep.
Maybe I'll sit beside you.
I think it's a total.
You gonna add on your green sheet?
I don't have a green sheet. I'll have to use red.
We have to do this in increments of five.
Do however you want.
Yeah, whatever you want.
State government's closing to the public. Oh, no, I already...
Has my name on it?
I thought it was three.
No, you don't have to have your name on it.
I know where it is, I'll just...
Did we get the mayors?
No, counted very low points.
So Mike, what is the city Middleton doing tomorrow?
We're open. Here at City Hall, the library and senior center closed. Our Public Works Department will be open, Finance Office will be open, Parks will be closed.
We're closing all public features, obviously, government.
There'll just be a handful of us here at the building.
We didn't want any of our staff. I mean, technologists are closing, so we didn't want any staff, yeah.
It's all folks who live within a mile. Rationing department, they don't have to...
Sit in the parking lot.
Abby's not coming in.
Oh, okay.
Fun people are seeing you.
Yeah, no school or anything. It's full. Yeah, daycare is gonna be, start to become a problem.
Well, they might be worse on Thursday.
I do not. That's just too hard for everybody.
Sorry, I'll be just like a minute.
Add 'em up.
I have one here.
Uh, I need to turn mine in, yeah.
Yeah, we have on the agenda, right, just this and then we're done.
I rated that low because I'll take a recess. I mean, if, if we were using this...
Yes.
The next...
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
While we let them add it up.
Wait a minute.
Howard?
What happened? Twenty-eight points for land use and project design, forty-three for financial, sixteen for other policy considerations, and fourteen for development team and overall impression. Adds up to one hundred. Actually, they're rounded, so it actually ends up to a hundred-one, I think. Is that right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, so I rounded.
So what that says is, those are the most important.
You mean, somebody put less than a fraction?
At a group.
No, when you divide.
Oh, when you divide. Oh, okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
Round it up to the nearest whole number, and that's how it came out. Does anybody have a problem that it adds up to a hundred-one?
Nope.
Nope.
I've got, been thinking about this more. Mark is talking about total increment value, or adding increment. As, I'm wondering the difference between how purchase prices relates to total increment value.
It doesn't.
And that's...
That's why I keep saying, this is two transactions. The whole idea of this was to get in and out from TIF three so that TIF five could have a project.
And that's where I'm having trouble with, I have no problem with total increment. I am having trouble with purchase price being more important than total increment.
Okay.
That's, you weighted that less than, so this is what, how it, everybody comes up with. When I, I mean, this is fair.
No, I rated total valuation highest.
I think this is very helpful to staff. It shows, uh, uh, you're, the average of nine, the nine of you, no one graded, greater than the other, on how you feel the value of the project should be rated. Categories.
What this tell, what this tells me is that now we give you this list, you go back and you rate 'em.
Yep.
Rank 'em.
So we are done.
Be good to have a vote of the committee for us to do that before you...
Okay, we could sit here all night long and say, I, this number's wrong because I don't think it's right. Well, the group just decided what the number should be.
Right.
So, give that to the, your track staff, and they rank them. Right?
And then I think we also make those two proposals public, right? We'll send those...
Don't send it in my email.
Send it to me.
Can you send us a copy of this?
Yes, we can send you a copy of that.
Are we done?
Well, the committee should make a vote on what you've come up with in direction to staff.
Don't we have to recommend to the council?
Yes. We need a recommendation motion.
Okay, I make that motion.
Well, you're not part of the...
You're not, you're not part of the council.
Oh, we need a, a motion to recommend to the council that we use the, the compromise.
I'll ma, I'll make the motion that we use the compromise values that we came up with tonight. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, unanimous.
And then, uh, there was some discussion about whether you wanted to have the four different staff members, uh, viewed separately or as a composite.
I think you should put 'em in a grid just like this.
Put 'em in a grid and add up the numbers.
Yes.
But, but separate?
Just put 'em in, in grid just like this.
Which, that's making it separate. You put them in a grid and then have a total for all four.
Okay, so do you want those by our staff names, or...
No.
No.
Anonymous.
Evaluate a number one, two, three, and four.
Are you just meaning, what, how you're gonna score the proposals, or you're going through and how you're weighting the proposals also?
Oh, we've all, we've done the weighting.
We're, so you're not talking about...
Done the weighting, so we would just score based on these weighting criteria.
You don't wanna do the weighting, just scoring, okay. Okay.
For each of the, what really are, well, was three development proposals. I'm not sure. We got two from T-WALL or not. Just one this time? So the two different proposals, then, unless Jacob, you have two. All right. The two development proposals, um, evaluated by each of the four of us by this weighted system.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Someone?
Motion for staff to, uh, for, for staff members to put down their scores for each of these categories, um, list them separately, add them up, but do not, um, identify who the four people are tied with the numbers.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
And who, I'm sorry, I forgot, I was taking the minutes. Who made the motion the second on the first motion to accept the composite?
Uh, I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Thank you.
And before we close out, I just wanna say for the record that when I talked about dishonesty before, I was not naming or even thinking of the person who I was, it wasn't, I wasn't talking about you, Dan, about dishonest. It was the, the process. I wanna be very clear. I wanna be very clear.
That'd be a hell of a headline for George.
I don't know, but he just pointed to me when he said dishonest. Can you stop? Yes, yes, you're doing this, sir. You...